Typically, what we call our daytime. Most people are leaving work for work around six, seven o'clock in the morning, and they get home around six and seven o'clock at night. So those are our daytime alarms. And nighttime is the rest of the 24 hours, 6:00 P.M. to 6:00 A.M. And you'll notice that the number of incidents per day is significantly higher, this is per month, than it is at night. So my Wilton High School math said that's 149 total calls we did last year. That doesn't include service calls that I spoke of. If somebody has a problem with their detector, we have to go out and look at a burn pile if someone asks questions about. This is just times that we've been dispatched to an emergency. And those are the numbers per day, per month, by day and night. The next slide will give you a perspective of the number, average number of responders we get per month, per time of day. So as you can see, the orange, the orange or yellow on this side, I'm looking at mine, you can see that we get significantly more people to respond at nighttime, just by the nature of them being around at night and not being working in their normal jobs. So typically, on a daytime alarm, you know, you see some, I see some alarming numbers there, you know, in September, that's, that number is two. That's two people for a daytime call. That was the average number of people we had respond in September of 2019. So that's it, two people. This is, this is per day a week, so it gives you some perspective. It follows along what I've been talking about on 2019 statistics. The average number of responders per incident by day of week. And you can see, you know, obviously, the daytime, you get more people on the weekend, during the day, and at night, across the board, it's typically more people at night. Again, most folks work out of town during the normal workday. And again, this shows you the number of people by incident, so that kind of falls along with the statistics as they've been presented so far. So I think these slides may be out of order. Okay. Well, I'll go through this one. I'm not sure if you got it out of order. I'll go over this one now. This is a quote out of the Wilton Master Plan. So the Master Plan is like the town's plan of how we're going to manage our town moving forward in the ensuing years. And this is right out of the Master Plan, which the fire department piece of this is updated in, as you can see at the bottom of the slide, November 2016. And, you know, part and parcel, it says, even with the current call volume, there is a struggle. This was in 2016, especially during the daytime calls. To be able to provide manpower needed to fight fires, this is due to the fact that firefighters are working out of town, or their employers are not willing or able to support this activity at the current time. Providing one full-time employee would make the response time during the day much quicker. This person could be on the scene to investigate and request assistance as needed to allow firefighters that they need to leave work only when absolutely necessary. Keeping to a minimum of full-time, part-time employees while still using the volunteer system in place for years will help keep the costs at an affordable level. So this is right out of the town's Master Plan in looking forward. So our department proposal. The facts are that the department's struggling to keep up with the demands of the community and its current structure, while still trying to balance family and work commitments. Our fire inspectors are behind, at times members are altering their work schedules and their regular jobs to meet scheduling requests and provide weekend alternatives. So currently, there's no weekday alternatives, because Ron and I work full-time jobs. So our alternative is Saturday. So we're supposed to inspect this building on Saturday. So we have to ask that the janitor come in, so we can do our fire inspection. And this isn't just a Wilton issue. Volunteer departments across the country are feeling the impact of folks working away from their home during the day, as well as the lowest unemployment in 50 years. Nationally, volunteer fire departments are closing due to the lack of coverage. You can move with us and look it up. Pennsylvania's really getting hit hard with this. They're actually not, don't have enough volunteers to keep the department open, so they have to close it and rely on the next town to, to provide service. I'm not standing here telling you that's where we are, but unless we do something to promote people to volunteer and keep us alive, you know, that's, we're on a downhill slide. In 2019, the average number of fire incidents during daytime hours is twice the number of nighttime calls for service, while the average number of responders is 32% during the daytime. So those are the statistics I gave you earlier. On average, six responders can be counted on during a daytime weekend, weekday incident based on the 2019 statistics. Again, that's an average of six people. So you saw the averages there. Sometimes you get more, and sometimes you get less. A point that kind of drives this home is how the volunteer services are struggling is that a couple of weeks ago, we were called at around 10:15, 10:30 in the morning on a Friday to a three-alarm building fire. And that three-alarm building fire was in Marlborough, New Hampshire. Okay? So I'm sure folks know where Marlborough is and how far away that is from Wilton. It's, it's almost unheard of that we've traveled that far to assist another community. But it was a daytime alarm. They needed the help, and they kept coming east until they got enough people to answer the alarm. We were going just to cover their station, and we did do an alarm, a medical alarm while we were there. So it just shows you, it's not just a Wilton issue, it's across the whole state. So I'll close part of this with, we're asking you for support to ensure that there's adequate fire pre-planning, inspections, prevention, and response, and carefully ensure the safety of the town and the citizens of Wilton. And I put this slide together, you're being asked, the article's asking for 50,000, but I wanted to, for transparency, let you know that in the ensuing years, if we hired someone at the grade 13 town level, which is an entry-level salary grade for the emergency services, the chief's positions are all that, and ours isn't, obviously, because it doesn't exist, but the police and ambulance chief are, start at 64 to 10. You have to add us to the state retirement. It's in R.S.A., and the state in New Hampshire, you don't have a choice about that. And the benefits plan is a, the worst-case scenario, not that it's bad, but it's, it's the most financial exposure if the person that we hire for this position comes in and needs a family plan. So I tried to put that as really what you're voting on in the future. It includes that. So annually, it's 110, 804. And entertain anything to keep us alive. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to amend to the article.
Carrie. Carrie.
I rose to make an amendment to this warrant article. For those of you who did not attend the public hearing, this was a very long discussion at the Budget Committee with the fire department. As you can see, the committee voted three, two, one to do this. It was actually a tie. The chair does not vote on the Budget Committee unless there is a tie. So I bit the bullet and voted to get this Budget Committee approval, because I wanted the town to consider this. I personally think there's a real need for making this move. On the other hand, I think when the town considers adding, whether it's essentially as an employee for a number of years into the future, committing the town to spending a lot of money, we need to take a hard look to justify it. We did that many years ago, when the ambulance service ran out of volunteers, and we had to find a chief. Select Board put together a committee, and we studied the issue. The committee came back about six months later with recommendations, and we moved the following year to a chief. Town administrator, a number of us saw a need over the years as things became more complicated and more legally bound administering towns. We put together a committee, the Select Board put together a committee. A number of people were involved in examining the need for a town administrator. And a year later, was brought to the town and approved. These things were approved, in my experience, watching the process, being involved in that process, because people who were not attached to an emotional agenda were making considered, informed recommendations to add to the position. So I bring an amendment tonight with that in mind. My amendment reads, CS of town will vote to raise 200, excuse me, $20,000 to fund a stipend for the purpose of funding a volunteer fire chief through March 2021. Further, CS of town will direct the Select Board to appoint a committee to study the need for a full-time fire chief, and to bring a report of their findings and a recommendation based on those findings to town meeting in March 2021. Thank you.
So we have an amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been, we have the amendment as Mr. Hughes read it, and it's been seconded. And I think, Mr. Poston, do you want to speak to the amendment? Is there discussion on the amendment? Are you ready for the vote?
Just so that I'm clear, D.J. Garcia, Pete Hill Road, just so that I'm clear for the amendment, would this $20,000 be added to the current stipend of the fire chief? And if so, what is that figure? So we have a total amount that would be stipended for the chief? Thank you.
I'm told it's $15,000 currently.
So then, just so I'm clear on your amendment, it would be a $35,000 stipend?
No, I have suggested $20,000.
Twenty?
Right.
Okay. So it would be an increase of $5,000 to the current stipend for the fire chief? Thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment? Yes, Mr.?
Based on what you said at the beginning, is this going to be a valid vote as well?
I have a written request for a valid vote on all amendments to this article. So yes. Yes, if you can.
Well, it seems to me.
Do you tell us where you are?
Joe Coffey, Stagecoach Road.
Thank you.
It seems to me we're going to spend extra money to not get a full-time person. We're going to have somebody who is going to still have another job and not be available. It just seems to make the most sense to me. If we save one life, cut down on this $50,000, $100,000, save one building, save one farm, let's not be cheap. Let's do this right. Say no to the amendment, and let's get a full-time fire chief.
Yes.
Donner, again, so just to be clear, the fire department, the current chief is not doing this for the money. Okay? So I just want that said. I'll be the fire chief if any of this is voted down, or in or down, as long as the folks will keep me. It's about the work, and it's about being prepared and promoting, you know, membership, et cetera. To me, and I said this to the chair, to me, it's not about the money. It's about actually getting the work done. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Still on the minute, Mr. Schultz.
Thomas Schultz, Burton Highway. So I had the opportunity to serve on both of the committees that Mr. Hughes is referencing. I was on the ambulance committee to determine if the town needed a full-time ambulance chief. I was on the committee that ultimately decided to recommend making a full-time town administrator position in the town. And based on my experience, and I've spent 23 years on the ambulance, and was son, and the grandson, and the great-grandson of many fire officers, I think that there's really no need to study it any further. I think that any study committee is going to come up with the same result that those other two study committees came up with, which is that due to economic changes, to demographic changes, the aging of the population, the reality is, is that a volunteer fire service is really not sustainable. The fact is that you had full-time police department now for many, many decades. You now have a full-time ambulance department for several years, and you have a full-time town administrator for many years, for several years. For better or worse, because there is no one left that's willing to volunteer the time and energy that takes for one of these jobs. And the fire chief position in this municipality, like any municipality, is required to have a range of responsibilities. Obviously, the building inspection that we mentioned, and all these other responsibilities that no one person in a volunteer position can really function at anymore. And to Mr. Norris's point about the third alarm in Marlborough the other day that Wilton got pulled into, he didn't mention is that your neighboring community, Amherst, had a third alarm on Tuesday in the middle of the morning, and they have a paid fire department. My cousin's the captain on it. And they responded and saved the building. I mean, so you're going to end up saving yourself some money by putting this off for another year. You're going to end up doing it anyways. And to that other gentleman's point, what's going to happen in the next 12 months is potentially, you're going to have a situation like they had in September, when they only had two people show up on average on a weekday to respond. And, you know, to get a truck out of the station, you need at least two guys, and really prefer with three. So they're sitting in the station waiting for people to show up while your house is burning down. So keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do agree that we do need to look into the possibility of finding ways of increasing our fire department's response. My concern is, at this point in time, spending the money for a full-time fire chief and asking, was there ever any considerations of looking into a part-time fire chief at this point in time, to see if that's going to be a viable situation over the next few years before delving into spending, you know, 110,000 constantly going out every year for a full-time fire chief in the, in the town size of, you know, Wilton? And I guess the other question would be, I mean, I know that there's been some issues, and maybe you can answer this on me for me, because I know there's going to, eventually there's going to be coming down to regionalized ambulance services, because everybody's having problems. Has this been a consideration? And I guess I've heard before, is this a problem to be able to try and do this on the fire side of it? I'd heard that there could be a problem in regards to that. So I don't know if you could answer that question for me in regards of some type of regionalization, fire department, like, you know, trying to join the fire departments for volunteers like Lineboro and Wilton, or, you know, Temple and Wilton and Lineboro, you know, much like we do with the ambulance now.
Can I answer from here?
Yes.
So there's always opportunity, right? When we're looking at our emergency services and how we operate today versus how we're going to operate tomorrow. But virtually today, the mutual aid system works exactly as Karen described. So we showed that it worked the other day, it just took a while to get them there, right? So today, we have automatic mutual aid. There's a dispatch, building firing Wilton, Lineboro, Milford, Etone, at the same time we are. So in essence, we're started that process. You know, there'll be, there'll come a day when a department can no longer exist, and then the regionalization obviously will be a solution for that. And that will take a lot more than, you know, just an idea. That's, that's a lot. But, but yes, in essence, it exists today through the mutual aid agreements that we're all part of.
So I guess right now, we're on the amendment as far as that goes, but my, my other question, like I said before, was there any consideration or talk in regards to the possibility of
One of the things with the part-time fire chief, we had, I don't know if all of us have looked into it, but some of us have looked into it. The problem that you have with the part-time fire chief is if they work over the part-time hours three times a year, it automatically goes into a full-time position. So then the decision is not decided by the town people. It's decided by that fire chief at that point, because then they're working over the time, and they'll go automatically full-time. Then you're also looking at the New Hampshire Retirement Group, too, which is your highest benefit, because it falls under the law enforcement. You know that.
So this was looked into, and this is the reason why this decided to go with a full-time as to opposed to a part-time, because of the possibility of going over hours?
The, the fire department has brought forward that they would like to go full-time, and they never brought to us the part-time. That is something that I looked into on my own.
Okay. Thank you.
So since we're kind of still talking about both the original article and also the amendment, I want to put my take on this. I don't support going to a full-time fire chief at this point. Our town is too small to take on this expense. Right now, we are not having our town increase in population. We have no commercial and no industrial to offset the cost of this department. I lived in a town that started out to be 3,000 people. Today, it stands at 200 people, and they don't have anything left in the town, where before, they were a very prosperous town. They had all these businesses, they had schools, banks, post office, everything, fire department, police. And now they have 200 people with everything having to be used out of the next town over. I don't want that to happen to our town, and that's what I see happening. We don't have a main street anymore, and we're trying to improve the main street. But how do we get businesses in here? How do we get industry in here to offset the taxes of the people? Anytime that we increase a cost, that comes to the residents, the taxpayers, the elderly. We have nothing here that's bringing in our young people to keep our town becoming prosperous. Right now, if, with them having only 20 active members out of 33 member possibility, we currently have to use mutual aid, which is no problem, because we offer mutual aid to the downs as well. Towns that are our size, that do not have businesses like our town, still run under volunteer. Typically, the towns that I have researched, they hit about a population of 6,500 people, and they have commercial and businesses to offset the taxes to help pay for that full-time fire chief. But that full-time fire chief also has other duties, such as building inspector, they took care of building permits, some of them also handle the highway department. So they had combination jobs to cost, to offset their cost. The one thing that I do stand behind, and what Carrie Hughes stated, is we need to do a study of this. Can our town afford having full-time? Do we need a full-time? I have already started checking into other towns to see what would happen if we went regional, so that we could mix a few towns together. But one thing that I was told is, when you do a regional, you have people pulling that who is going to be the chief of that regional. So that is one of the problems that we would have. But it is something that we need to look at. We're not growing. We're getting smaller. And in order, in order for us to have a success in looking forward, we need to leave it as a volunteer department.
D.J. Garcia, Pete Hill Road, thank you for sharing the story. Kelly Sue and I actually, just the other night, had a conversation very similar to what she just shared. And although we're discussing the amendment to this, which Mr. Hughes had presented, which is former committee, and a $20,000 stipend, I just want to remind everybody, that's what we're currently discussing. But the discussion that Kelly Sue and I had the other night, and I just want everybody to really let this sink in, is that Wilton has fallen behind, absolutely, 100%. We have not kept up with the times, and this, what Mr. Nurse is suggesting, well, sorry, the chief is suggesting, is necessary. For, for Wilton to be considered viable in the state, in this region, we have to make decisions like this, and they're going to cost money. And we don't have a downtown, we don't have a main street, we don't have business. I can say that this fire department, the, the command staff, has made, my business, Wilton Elspeth Pizza, made changes to make it safer for myself, my investment, my employees, my customers. They have forced me to spend money. They're doing their job. You have to get quality people. I mean, we, we all see this. We all work at places right now where they say, you have to have so much education, so much experience to do this job. To make 110,000 dollars a year, I mean, I own a small business. I didn't make that, let's be honest. And I don't have the education or the credentials to make that anywhere. I don't know how many people in this room have those credentials. And I'm curious, what is the requirement of the individual to make a pay like that? Because it is a lot of money. I support the fire department, the ambulance department, the highway department, because I think that Wilton needs to be taken seriously by our neighbors, by the people who look at us, by the people who consider coming to live here. We need to be taken seriously, and this is how we do it with our pockets, and it's not going to be fun, it's going to cost money, and it's not a charity. But we need these services in this, in this town. Thank you.
I was on the Wilton Fire Department, 19 years, I was a deputy chief. My credentials are certified level one, level two, career level. I offered to take over as an interim fire chief, and I was told that it was a conflict of interest, because my wife was a selectman in town. I retired two years from the state prison. We had to make life and death judgments every day. I taught at the police academy for fire suppression for the state prison. Like I said, I'm retired. I'm available. I was willing to do it for the stipend before they raised it to 15,000. Now 20,000, and I'm still around every single day. Not once has they, have they come to me and asked me to come back to the fire department. I left the fire department, because I wanted the members of the fire department to be retrained. And I was, basically, their backs were turned on me. They're a great bunch of guys. I support them 100%, but I don't support a full-time fire chief. Not when there's somebody in town that's willing to do this for a stipend and has the credentials to do that. I'm not a grant holder. I would need help with grant writing if that was the case, if this was voted down. And whoever they put in as a fire chief, I am available. Thank you.
Just to remind you, we're still talking about the amendment. Is there more discussion on the amendment to Article 21? Are you ready to vote? Okay, so what? I'm sorry. Catherine.
Thank you, Catherine Rucker, from the Hart Street in Wilton. And I've been working in Wilton for 38 years, resident now for last two and a half. Love the fire department, great job. But I do, I, from working in town all this time, I've seen the town, like Kelly said, it's having a hard time getting things going. I feel like it's been a great, the fire department is great as a volunteer fire department. We have, what, 3,200 people in the town? And what I see as a real problem is we just keep adding more positions, 110,000 dollars, which really doesn't sound like we've looked into it. I support doing, investigating to make sure that it's really worthwhile. I'd like to know, out of like the 149 calls, how many were those were fires? Or how many there were actual incidences in Wilton? I know a lot of time, they're mutual aid to other towns. I just don't think that there's perhaps the need to have a full-time.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes.
First, I want to say I'm a huge fan of all the sheep dogs. Please fire all of those. Please fire all of those guys. Um, one of the things that I've heard during the presentation, granted, every, every organization needs some direction, but honestly, it sounded to me like we knew we're firefighters. I mean, if you have a full-time chief there all the time, that's awesome. But if still another guy shows up when the call comes, do you still, do you have enough guys to go to the fire? You don't. So I, I'm not 100% sure if I'm clear on, aside from inspections and building maintenance and whatever things they have to do like that, how that really is more helpful if somebody can clear that up? How that helps?
Ma'am?
Please. So part of this position would be recruitment, right? So for years, um, we've had folks in the schools doing fire prevention. Part of that fire prevention is educating them about the department, what we do, who we are, uh, what we do in the community. And a large part of that was done at the high school, okay? And a lot of department members started either in high school and went through the, uh, fire level one program through the scene it, and then wound up getting on the department and actually going, serving the town of Wilton for, for many years. And we've actually had people now, Tom's son is now a full-time firefighter in Dover. So he started in Wilton as a volunteer, gave us probably eight, nine years or so in town as a volunteer. Everybody that comes out of high school is, is gung-ho, it's a young man's job, one, a young lady's job. And we've had both come out of that program. And, um, so part of that recruitment is being out on the pavement. But we, we can't do that on the weekends, right? And that's, that would be part of this person's charge. Yes, we need more firefighters. Uh, our application is right online on our website. It's, Jeff made it real easy, so we'll take any applicant, applicants that are willing to put in an application. It's that simple. If you want to come on the department, all you gotta do is fill out an application and, uh, go through the process. So, um, that's part of what this person will be responsible for.
Thank you. If you're ready for the question, we're gonna do this by ballot vote. I think we should all have a kind of blue ballot here. Remember our instructions on how to vote. We're gonna read the war article. What this, for those of you a little bit new to this, what this means is that if this amendment passes, this becomes new war Article 21 and we'll take a second vote on that. So war, we're just voting on the amendment and you can have another amendment if you want. But this amendment would replace Article 21. So we would not be taking a vote on Article 21 as, as it's printed in the war. Okay? So Article, the amendment to Article 21, we're gonna be voting on now is to see, to amend Article 21 to see if the town will vote to raise $20,000 to fund a stipend for the purpose of funding a volunteer fire chief through March 2021. Further, to see if the town will direct the select board to appoint a committee to study the need for full-time fire chief and to bring a report of their findings and a recommendation based on those findings to the town meeting in, uh, March 2021. So we will now open the ballots. We're, we're not gonna keep this one open for an hour. This is just until everyone's voted.
Based on the comments earlier, shouldn't that number be 5,000, not 20,000? Because the way that reads is that would change the stipend to 35,000, not to 20,000. The way you just read it.
That's the way the amendment is written.
Okay. Because it says to raise an appropriate, the sum of $20,000 for a stipend. There's already $15,000 in the existing budget for a stipend for the fire chief. So by the way that that is written, that changes that, the amendment, the amount in the operating budget to 35,000, the way it's written, in my view, that's.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready for the vote. Mark your ballots and cast in place. Is there a? Would you like to? Would you like to clarify that?
Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Clarify. I wrote the amendment for 20,000. That was it. I didn't ask what the stipend was. I was looking to spend $20,000 between now and town meeting next year.
I didn't clarify anything.
So.
I didn't clarify.
So he wants to spend $20,000 for the total.
Yeah, but that's not how it's written. So it doesn't.
We're gonna vote, we're gonna vote on the amendment as it's been presented. Remember a circle, don't riff. Make a circle over your choice. Please tap your ballot in the bottom corner there.
She's working still, I think. I hope.
Hello. I'm great, this has been a wonderful week. I keep checking my phone, David called off my school yet.
Would anyone else like to pass the ballot? We're gonna count the ballots now.
Well, we need to do something about trails. You, me, need to get us volunteers. Rachel, uh, Skylar Gutter, car. Once after, I had a Christmas party at, uh, Curly's house. And, uh, when they came back, Skylar had left her car at their house. Frederick's house. Frederick's husband comes in, pulls in behind her gets out of the car and goes, oh, I guess I should do part of the grand inside of it. So they're front end.
Oh, really?
Yeah. But they did a really great job, the insurance company. Hey, we think what I wanna do is go to the mother of all.
Oh, yeah?
Part of it. On their last year on a train, clock back, around 1916 or something. And you wanted to kind of sit there and just sort of float out and pour.
Really, it's that good, huh?
I guess, I heard, I smelled it, but I didn't get near it. But I knew what it was. So what have you been doing these days? You still doing voicings?
Oh, yeah. Trying to start a trouble, trying to double four.
I don't know if we're going anywhere. What problem? The truly only person I remember that's in, in that kind of business. Um, I wanted, when I was head of the service, 2BA. And Rachel started going deaf when she was about 14, 15 years old. Now she's 99.9%. She has hearing aids, so she's still making faces about her daughter. So I would just want to do is find somebody who has the resources involved, put together a video and get some actions, it doesn't matter. And duplicate what happens from what a person has heartache of hearing loss.
Results of the vote on the amendment were 45 yes, 64 no. So the amendment fails. And we are now back to Article 21 as originally presented. Would you like to talk to Article 21?
I just want to explain the rationale from the, from the select board when this was brought forward by the fire department. Um, our board took the position that this is such a big change to town government that we didn't feel that three of us would should make that decision because it affects so many people. So we took a neutral stance on that and we wanted everyone to come to town meeting to discuss this. Um, when the amendment was including a select board's, uh, you know, study group, it's still cautious, it's, it's obviously a good idea, but this is a big decision that, um, I don't think three of us should be making, so just like, no.
Good coffee, Sage Coach Road. I just want to reiterate, look, we've just a $5 million budget here. We're really gonna argue about $100,000 in life savings and house saving? I certainly hope that if you guys vote against this and your house firms down, that you don't regret. I think it's really important to put money in the right place. Maybe they can take the funding out of someplace else, but maybe we're trying to support.
Chris Carter. I was on the fire department for 27 years here. And, uh, in that 27 years, I found, uh, a department go from 33 people to 20 people. And every year, that 20 will get shorter from here on out. When I first got on, we used to have seven or eight people that would run out of Hendrix wiring cable, issues manufacturing, label art. And before you know it, four trucks were leaving the station, going to whoever's house we had built. You saw what Donny put together for Mankau. Two people, and a second call, two people. They're gonna be lucky if you can put a kitchen fire out with two people. That chief being full-time, getting there almost instantly here in town, making that call on whether he needs more help or if he can deal with it with his guys, is critical, critical. Two minutes of response time is a matter of a room fire versus a house fire. That's something that everyone in this room should take into consideration. And if someone's there to make that call to save your house, farm, whatever it might be, a cop, that's the decision we should be making. We shouldn't be looking at this as if we're spending 150,000. We, we should be looking at this that we're improving the town that we live in. And if you people don't want to live in a better town, then you probably ought to move somewhere else.
I'm sitting here listening to the scare tactic that is being put to the people.
There ain't no scare tactic.
It is a scare tactic.
It's facts, Kelly.
Okay.
It's facts.
The problem is, when there is a building fire, there are protocols at MAC base. There is going to be mutual aid called immediately if our department does not respond within a certain amount of time.
Yeah, three guys on a truck in from Milford.
Mr. Carter, I appreciate the strength of, of your convictions, but please let, please let the speaker address her, make her point, just as we let you make yours.
I still stand strongly that our town cannot afford having a full-time fire chief. Because what happens is this trickles down. You have a full-time fire chief, that's $110,000 minimum each year. Each year it's going to be increased. The next thing that's gonna happen, they're gonna come before us and say, we need to have a deputy chief. We need to have firefighters. They did not have full-time over in Milford until they had over 8,000 people in their town. They have businesses to offset taxes. These taxes are hitting all the residents. We have nothing to offset our taxes. It scares me to think that our town is decreasing, it's not increasing. It scares me to think that our town is decreasing, it's not increasing. And all we're doing is pushing people out of here because they can no longer afford their home. Think that this is $110,000 for the year, but this is the continuing cost that will come to the people. If there's a way that we can increase the population of our town, we'd have more services for the tax dollars that we pay. The same thing has happened up at the school. People have spoken this year and have decreased the budget for them and want them to sharpen their pencil. I feel the same way strongly about our taxes here in regards to the full-time fire chief.
So, I see both sides of this, okay? Because again, Tom Schultz, Burton Highway, Wilton. To my earlier comments about the fact that this is an inevitability and why I put it off for another year, I still believe in that. I'm going to share with you that. I think some of Kelly's points are valid too, because she's right. Because you're not going to be able to get by with just a full-time chief. Because unfortunately, the reality is, you're going to continue to have a decline in volunteerism in the fire service. What happened with the ambulance was, you hired a full-time ambulance chief, then you started hiring paid EMT paramedics, and then you started hiring paid EMTs, and now you have a full-time ambulance service. The reason is, is that the call volume demanded. We couldn't do it with volunteers anymore. To say that we can't afford it, or it's going to hurt our taxes, because our taxes are high, and the bulk of that is driven by the school. And I did attend the WLC meeting and did help devote that budget down. But I also understand that there's a significant public safety and thus liability risk here because if you continue to say, well, we can't afford it, we're just basically putting ourselves in a situation where eventually, we're going to have a tragedy. Because we're not just talking about the residents or business, and we do have businesses. Last time I checked in town, we're not just like Wilton, we're nothing but residents. We still have a few businesses left. But we're talking about the potentiality because you're operating with such a thin margin of safety when you're working with one or two guys. To your husband's point about the RIT, that's Rapid Intervention Team, and that's a team that you should have if you're sending guys into a building so that they have somebody to rescue them if they get trapped. We don't have that luxury because we don't have enough people. So, when you send two guys, or three, or four out on a call, and they're waiting 10 minutes for a mutual aid truck to come from another town, and they're in that building. My cousin was in that building in Amherst on Tuesday, and they had a basement fire. You go down those stairs into that basement, which was full of crap, and you can't get out of that basement, you're done. Doesn't matter if you're a volunteer, career, or stipend firefighter, you're still dead. So, I think we really got to think about not only the cost of this, our scare tactics aside, but the risk we're putting these volunteers, stipend firefighters at by trying to continually just save money. So, that's the last thing I'm saying, it's, but heaven, thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Manning, Russell Hill Road. Sometimes I wrap my head around what the warrant article is going to entail. Is there a vehicle that this person is going to use? Is that going to be down the road, or are we voting in another junk truck or something like that? Just to kind of get a full scope of what this is going to bring on.
Hi, shining coffee, 29 stage coat. I just, we just moved here, and it was my responsibility within our relationship to get homeowners insurance. And I know because this just happened. And our homeowners insurance, when they asked, I had gotten a price, they came out to check our house because our house is historic. When they asked what the Wilton Fire Department was like, we told them it was volunteer. Our homeowners insurance jumped. Just wanted to let you know that $13 per 100,000 that each will come out of our pockets, all of us, it might be offset. You should look into it because for that peace of mind, to have a fire department that is full-time, or at least a fire chief that is full-time, it might actually in the end save us.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Bruce Barry. I live on Goldsmith's Road. I stand here with a lot of mixed emotions. I retired a couple of years ago, so I guess I'm now on the quote-unquote fixed income. But in an early life, I spent 21 years in a fire department, just a little ways from Wilton. Of those 21 years, I spent nine years as the fire chief. I talked to my selectmen about, lobbied about restructuring. I also worked for the town, and I talked to them about restructuring my job to one day a week to do fire department duties. I've listened to a lot of people talk about the actual firefighting. The chief spoke earlier about the other duties, but I think that's gotten a little lost at the end of the whole conversation. I was drowning in paperwork in the small town of Mason, which was a very degenerate community. When you have a fire, there are fiery ports that go to insurance companies. Just the previous speaker just spoke about their fire insurance, there's ISO ratings. They've been out of it for 25 years, so there's things that have changed since my time. But what your fire insurance is and how the fire department is structured, and whether it's a rating nine, or at least back then, or an eight, some of the policies that are in place, those are the things that a chief is going to work on outside of the firefighting part. I considered my job in the town of Mason as 5% firefighting and 95% other stuff related to the fire service. I don't know if that helps. Thank you.
Felice Pullum, Fernsville Road. I just want to remind everyone that firefighters don't just fight fires, they also save lives. I'm here today because of our fire department. Twice have they saved my life. In October, I had a very bad auto accident, and the firefighters arrived on the scene. It took over an hour and the jaws of life to get me out. And because of them, they kept me calm and helped me. My injuries were unknown at the time, but they were life-threatening. And again, the EMTs did an amazing job. In January, I had another life-threatening incident at home. I had a brain seizure, and both the EMTs and the firefighters got there so quickly that again, they literally saved my life. They did not even know what was happening to me. Was it a stroke? Was it a seizure? Was it something else? And so, I just would like to remind everyone that it's not just fires that these brave men and women, or that they're performing, they're also actually coming into our homes at times and because of their speedy arrivals, actually making a difference.
Thank you.
I think the lady deserves an answer on the vehicle. So, currently, right now, in the capital, the fire department capital improvement plan, which is worked on by the budget committee, there is a vehicle in that capital improvement plan, should we ever get a full-time fire chief. So, there's a capital improvement plan that we follow, and there's also funding for the vehicles that are in that capital improvement plan. So, yes, there would be a vehicle eventually. And I just want to point out, you know, I put that $110,000 out there, but that's the worst-case scenario. I'm certain that we can hire someone for less than that. You know, however much in the hiring process, if this passes, I'll have, I'll commit to you that we could probably hire someone for less than that, but that's what you're being asked and exposed to tonight, right? So, full transparency. I'd also like to just say that I presented everything, and they're all facts. Everything in that PowerPoint presentation, I can show you where I got the information. So, that presentation was given to the board of selectmen back in December or earlier. I received no feedback on it, but tonight. And so, I just want to let the folks know that I do this out of compassion. I've been doing it for 27 years out of compassion, so the people in my community. And I'm not here to scare anyone or derail anything. I'm here to just educate you on what your fire department does and what our current capabilities are. Thank you.
DJ RC and Pete Hill. So, I'm just coming up here to kind of reiterate what I had said earlier, which is there's a lot of unknowns with this. While I'm in support of making an investment in our fire department and improving potentially our homeowners rates, I like that idea. But to, like I said, the qualifications piece is missing for me. You know, what does somebody need to be capable of doing to earn a rate of pay that could be upwards of that and increasing year after year? So, in addition to that, scheduling, I mean, there's a lot of unknowns that doesn't really seem like we're going to try to work it out. And the $50,000, I think, represents potentially half a year, which I don't know if I'm the only one thinking that, but you know, how long is it going to take us to hire somebody? What's the hiring process? What are the qualifications we should expect? I think there is some merit to the committee. So, I mean, I'm not going to make an amendment to make us all vote again, but I do think that, you know, we should consider having a committee to look at this and highlight those qualifications that the fire department needs that individual to have, and that the townspeople would like to see that individual have, and then go from there.
Thank you. Are you ready for the question?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Poston was walking up to the microphone. I'm going to recognize him.
Full transparency, transparency here. We're talking about being proactive. Your former fire chief, Randy Hulke, took out of his own pocket to put me through EMT school. I became an EMT for the town of Wilton, and I was on the Wilton ambulance for a little over a month. A former fire chief told me, you either become an EMT or a firefighter. Because of the love of the fire department, I chose firefighting. Your chief, Randy Hulke, had the gumption to put somebody as an EMT on that department to take care of the firefighters. I took it upon myself to go through that course. I passed that course with flying colors and became an EMT. Full transparency. But yet, I still get pushed out.
I heard a motion to move the question. Will they hold that just? Kathy was up. Can you make it?
Yes.
So, a couple things. So, in all these years, I don't, first of all, normally...